This is Wednesday, August 24, 2022. We have completed the Board of Health meeting, work session on the biannual code amendments, and we now turn to council time agenda. We begin with public comment. If there are comments on the agenda only, and by the agenda, I'm referring to the council time agenda for today. And public, if you're present in the hearing room, please let staff know. Otherwise, star three to raise your hand on the phone or the raised hand icon on your computer or tablet. Staff, do you see any of the public wishing to give comment?
Chair, we have no one in the hearing room, and we do not have anybody requesting public comment online either.
Very good. Old business. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of August 17?
Or second?
Discussion, corrections, questions? Hearing then they stand approved as drafted. New business. There is a council time request from Vancouver Housing Authority. Kathleen, would you care to explain this?
I'll hand it over to Tulpe Lindsay and Michael Torres. They are looking at coming to council time to talk about a different project for 1406 funding, but Lindsay and Michael will have additional information.
I'm happy to start the conversation, but I'll turn it over to Michael for the details because what this is, the council previously approved an amount of funding for certain projects for the VHA, and they're just hoping to repurpose some of that funding.
Thank you, Lindsay. Michael Torres, program manager with Clark County Services. Good morning, Chair and Council. And this will be very quick because all we are asking for council agreement is for Roy Johnson.
Michael, could you get a little closer to your microphone? I'm sorry.
Absolutely. Can you hear me now better? Hello?
I can hear you, I think.
Okay, I apologize for that. I don't, I don't know why the sound check worked. It can't.
There you go. That's better. Connectivity is a mess this morning.
I, yes, I apologize. I'm not sure.
It's not you.
So this should be short, Chair and Council. What we are asking for is your approval for Roy Johnson, the executive director of the Vancouver Housing Authority, to come to you to request a reallocation of the State House Bill 1406 funds that you have previously approved for use in two projects. One is Tenny Creek, a 40-unit facility of affordable housing for people who are exiting homelessness. And the other one, correction, that's an assisted living facility. And the other one is Weaver Creek, an 80-unit facility in Battleground. Recently, the Vancouver Housing Authority received an award from the state to work on preservation of Azalea Place. I believe that's the way the name is said. A 12-unit facility in Hazeldale that serves people with behavioral health. Because of the rising costs of construction and contracting right now, that grant for preservation of Azalea Place is not sufficient to cover the costs. So Vancouver Housing Authority is hoping to get your approval to repurpose some of the funds that were previously approved for Weaver Creek and Tenny Creek and use them to complete the work, the preservation work at Azalea Place. So that's what he's going to come to you about to present. So conceptually, if you agree with the basic premise of the request, we will schedule some time for him to come to you as a council and present details and answer questions on those use of State House Bill 1406 funds. You have any questions?
Do you wish to give it a thumbs up, council? I see two thumbs up. Oh, three. It's good, we're good to go.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. And how about the 2023 to 25 site-specific plan amendments?
So yes, council, I've invited Oliver and Jose and Chris Cook to present this item. This is actually just to an overview of what the request is. The actual staff report and resolution will be on a Tuesday meeting, but this is requesting to suspend the 2023, 24, and 25 annual plan amendment cycles outlined in Clark County Code. So Oliver, if you could take over, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager, and good morning again, Madam Chair and councilors. For the record, Oliver Ojaco, Community Planning Director. Councilors, the County Manager is correct. We are coming to you to ask for suspension of the plan amendment typically known as annual reviews. It is codified in Title 40 that, and also provided in RCWU, the growth management that we allowed opportunity for property owners on an annual basis to make a request for plan amendment and a zone change, which we have been, we just recently completed with the council, July of this year, with the hearing on Chilashi Bluff. Now, typically when we, when I say we, the county and the seven cities extending it to woodland, when we are engaged in the periodic plan update, typically the council have suspended the annual reviews until the completion of the periodic review. The county is required to complete that periodic review June 30th of 2025. And it is a very big challenge to be doing the annual reviews when you are completely looking at reviewing and updating the land use plan for the county and the cities as is required and for us to meet that timeline. What I will do is just have Jose Alvarez quickly go over some background, some history, and then we are here to answer questions. At the end of the day, what I will be requesting from council is that each time that the council have suspended the annual reviews, you have a hearing so that the public will have opportunity to weigh in before you adopt the resolution. So that's what I will ask at the end of our presentation. With that, I will turn it over to Jose Alvarez just to quickly provide you some background and some of the conflict that we may run into if we were to continue to do the plan amendment while we also doing the general plan update. So with Jose, I will turn this over to you. And as the County Manager indicated, I am here as well as Jose and our legal counsel, Ms. Chris Cook, to answer questions that councilors may have. Jose?
Thank you, Oliver. Tina, can you put up the presentation Can you, can you see that all right?
Yes.
Can't you advance it?
Yeah, I'm gonna try something else. Okay. So as Oliver mentioned, the request is to suspend the annual view, annual amendment cycle from 2022 to 2026. And this is just kind of a graphic that gives you an overview of the current of the process. As Oliver mentioned, the 2025 to 2045 comprehensive plan adoption is required to be completed by June 30th of 2025. The current cycle that we're on, which is called the 2022 annual review cycle, required that pre-applications occurred last year, between October and December of 2021. Applications are submitted by January of 2022. We take the year to review, and then the adoption had historically been in January. We've since pushed that out. And then with the recent adoption, July of this year, we're now out to July 19th of 2023 is as soon as we can amend the plan going forward. So if we were to accept applications this fall and that the, the earliest adoption we could have would be July 19th of 2024, which would be within 11 months of that June 30th, 2025 date. So, and then in 2024, we would be doing this at the same time. And also, the, the adoption date would be July 19th of 2025, which would be within a month or month after the, the common plan update is completed, which would not be consistent with the once-a-year adoption cycle. In 2025, that cycle, we're proposing to get back to the 12- to 15-month period that we have historically been under. And so if we went back to the cycle, we would start that in accepting applications, October, December period of 2025, with the review through 2026 and adoption in early January of 2027. And so this is just essentially a write-up of this, what I've pointed out to you in the graphic about the conflicts that we're having with the dates. The one-year conflict that we're going to have, the 11 months, if we were to continue and have this adoption process happen in July of 2024, would be within a month. And then if we started the subsequent year, it would be July of 2025. And as Oliver mentioned, we have done this previously, beginning for the 2007 plan where we suspended the annual reviews in 2006. And then again, in, for the 2016 plan update, we council adopted a resolution in 2014 to suspend the process for those two years. If you have any questions, we'll be.
Yes, Jose, I just wanted to verify that I'm understanding this correctly. That for the two- or three-year period there, that property owners that normally could make some kind of annual explanation of applications that they'd like to make for change could no longer do that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct. Would there be an alternative means for them to be able to go forward? That's kind of a long period, it seems, for them not to be able to express what their needs are on their property?
So I think.
Shall I take that, Jose?
Sure.
Okay, this is Chris Cook from the prosecuting attorney's office. There is nothing that prevents property owners from communicating with council, from communicating with planning. But the state statute is very clear that amendments to comprehensive plans can be considered by the county no more frequently than once every year. That's a quote from RCW 3670A 132A. So that's, that is the shortest period of time as the adoption date for annual reviews has been moved further and further. This has, back in the year, this has had consequences. And this is one of the consequences. We, the county cannot lawfully amend the comprehensive plan between June 30, 2024 and June 30, 2025. Can't, can't do that. So that eliminates the possibility under the law of those 2024 annual reviews occurring. And there's no other way to amend the comprehensive plan than to amend the comprehensive plan. Likewise, the county cannot amend the comprehensive plan between June 30, 2025 and June 30, 2026. So that eliminates another set. And what planning is proposing is that the county get, get back on the schedule of having, when, when Jose said they're generally adopted in, in January, they're, they're generally adopted by the end of the prior year. It's, it's very often a late December meeting.
The effective date is usually.
But the effective date is generally the beginning of January the following year. And to do that would be, and to have a consistent schedule by which this occurs would provide certainty for property owners and the entire county. So you know, one, one facet of this proposal is we can't lawfully do annual reviews during this time period. And another facet is let's get, get back to the schedule where there is some certainty and predictability for all. I hope that answered your question, Chair Bowerman. It was a good question.
Well, why not June 23 to June 24?
Well, the current group of annual reviews, which cannot be adopted before July 2024, the current group is not proposed to be suspended. So that, that group is ongoing. But what planning is suggesting now is that rather than take applications starting in a month and a half for the 2023 annual review cycle, which would end too late to be lawful, that that be suspended. So the current set of applications, this top, the top piece on your chart there, they're ongoing. Planning Commission proceedings are scheduled, you know, applications are being reviewed, and those will come to the council. But they can't be adopted before July 19th because that's, July 19th, 2022 is when the council adopted the last bunch. Does, does that help?
Are there questions from council?
I, I'm not sure I have a question as much as a comment, if I may. This highlights an area that I've been tilting at and talking to Oliver and the manager about since I've been a counselor. It's related issues of what constitutes tax lots versus legally buildable lots. Where we're outside of rural centers on acreage, that's contiguous to people that have half-acre or one-acre legal lots. And we have this annual process that really is very hard for individual property owners. And I don't know if it's half a dozen in the rural Clark County or hundreds. But it takes lawyers, a, a year-long process to get what may look like a common sense change to, to have your property treated like your next-door neighbor's property. So I'm always looking for a solution, and we haven't found it yet, where we can solve this tax lot versus legal lot versus rural property that adjacent to more urbanized property. You know, in fairness to all property owners, I, I just wish in the comprehensive plan, we can kind of crack that nut and make it easier for the public to adjust some of these properties without needing a year-long comprehensive plan change for an individual property. You know, these, we have a particularly urbanized rural county. And as, in opposition, we are urbanized in a very, beyond the urban growth boundary because of growth before the Growth Management Act and the lack of planning over decades has caused particular problems for Clark County, especially in the greater Portland metropolitan area that has seen incredible growth. So if there is some way to, to, as we go into this comprehensive plan update, we can fix some of these individual property owner issues, that would be great because suspending this process for years really just aggravates the burden for rural property owners.
Are there comments from council? Oliver, what are you looking for from the council on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I'll be asking for is a hearing to consider the resolution to suspend. And the resolution to suspend is just to hold off until we complete the periodic review. It may seem like a long time, and this is commentary on my part, but given the fact that the last time we concluded was July, by law, we have to conclude the next one, like the, the current cycle also in July of 2023. If we were to start the next one, it will also be July of 2025. And that would be just not feasible given the fact that we are required by statute to complete the general update by July, by June 30th of 2025. So I am asking the council to go to a hearing to consider the resolution as, as was done in the past for folks to hold off until the completion. And then we'll start the cycle again in a manner that we have in the past so that there is some certainty, there is some consistency. If you recall, we were coming to the council when we were holding off until we completed the last year, when those hearings, the council had the hearings. But we have to hold off before the adopting resolution was completed. So those property owners has to wait. You know, so we want to avoid that going, moving forward. I am asking for a hearing on the resolution. You will also hear from the public in their view. I can tell you that property owners have been inquiring and wanting to know because they are aware that we do suspend the, the process during the annual review cycle. So they've been inquiring, will it be suspended? So that they will advise their client properly. Similarly, during the plan update, during the periodic plan update, property owners can continue to contact Clark County staff and, and the council. And we will look into whatever their issue is and see if that could be considered during the general plan update. You don't want to be doing spot zoning or doing, taking any action that could be very, very contrary to the general direction that the council wants to go. I'm sure the cities do the same thing. They will suspend because they all, I, I'm not sure what their cycle is. But for the count, for the county, because we've gone into July, it makes it very, very challenging for us. But property owners throughout the process will have opportunity to let us know what they would like us to do. Councilor Medviggi, I hear you. The issues that you're raising is very, very complex. We can talk offline about those. And you know, when you get into legal law determination, there is a statute that has to be followed. I, we don't have any say in, in, when it comes to following state statute as it relates to creation of legal lots. You know, local government has way of following that state statute to make sure that the lot in question was created consistent with the state platting laws. So there are so many issues, yes. Clark County was very, very personalized before the growth management act come into play. And what I tell folks is, yeah, your property is buildable until you come to Clark County Permit Center or Community Development to check in. You know, but we can talk offline on some of the issues that you're raising.
And Madam Chair, if I could, I, so I, I heartily support the resolution. It makes perfect sense. I was just looking exactly for what Oliver just said, you know, commitment from our PA's office and your staff to try to crack this nut in an overarching way. So we're not spot zoning. We're not violating state law, but we're providing solutions for, for all of our property owners that may be impacted negatively in our rural community.
Is there a motion from council for holding a hearing for the resolution to suspend the plan amendments? Or the applications for changes, I should say?
Some of them.
Is there a second? Okay, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, councilors. I don't even know when we will begin the next plan update, if I may, councilors. It might be sometime February of 2023 is the starting point. Currently, I may, I have shared this with the County Manager. The State Office of Financial Management is letting counties know that the population we should be planning for will, will not be issued until December of this year. So there you go. Another delay.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you, councilors.
Are there councillor reports today? I believe there are no work session reports. Lindsay, is there a report on policy issues?
Nothing further from me today. Thank you.
So we move into two executive sessions, estimated to take 15 minutes. It is 10:44. Let's allow 20 so that we can get in and out of that executive session, virtually speaking. Let's allow 20 so that we can get in and out of that executive session, virtually speaking. So that would be 11:05 that we would return. So we will go back to the executive session and back into council time later. So we'll see you at 11:05. This is Wednesday, August 7th. No, it's not. It is Wednesday, August 24, 2022, and we have been in council time and then executive session. Three executive sessions are on, two of them actually on three different topics. We have no after-action from them. They dealt with collective bargaining, and council was present during those discussions. So we are back now simply for the purpose of adjourning from council time. So this meeting is adjourned.